I have questions that you want answered prior to voting. If that question is of general interest, you may go to any microphone, pro or con, it really doesn't matter. However, if the question most likely is one of interest only to you, in other words, you don't think it is of general interest, I would ask you not to go to a microphone and ask that question, rather to come down front and see Dr. Zimmerman, who will direct you to someone who will answer the question for you and save the time of the town meeting answering a question which may be of interest only to you. Now, I've said that before at town meetings, and so far, no one's ever used that opportunity, because no one thinks that their questions only of interest to them. I can assure you, in some cases, it is of only interest to you, and let's try it tonight at least once, to see if it works. With that, let's see, since there are some new people here, let me introduce the boards to you, or have the boards introduced to you, and I would ask the Board of Selectmen to introduce the people at this table, Doray Hunter.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Beside me is Don Johnson, the Town Manager, and Norm Cohen, the Town Attorney. The moderator normally introduces this woman. Beside me, on Board of Selectmen, Nancy Tavernaire, Wayne Fredericks, Herman Kabakov, and Bill Mullin, and seated way in the back is the Assistant Town Manager, Treasurer, Finance Director, Tax Collector, and General All-Around Finance Genius, John Murray.
And this woman is Kathy Belton, the Town Clerk, who keeps me honest. Mr. Mackey, if you would introduce the Finance Committee, please.
This is the second time that Don has asked me to do this. It's really a test, to make sure that I know the names of the people on our committee.
You did well last time, six out of nine wasn't bad.
Can I stop while I'm ahead? On your left is Sid Johnson, coming across, John Prendeville, Gene Seiflie, Bob Miller, Peter Ashton, and Jesse Liberty. These gentlemen are two new members, and you may have heard about them, the contributions they made to this evening's discussion. Two people are missing, the senior person on our team, Chuck Homestead, he couldn't make it for a business trip and rent a robot, for the same reason.
And how about introducing the School Committee, who will do that?
You don't expect me to do that.
No, and I certainly don't, and I'm not doing it either.
Hi, good evening, my name is Mike Scanlon, I'm Chairman of the Local School Committee. On this end is Mickey Williams, she's also Chairman of the Regional School Committee. Nancy Banks beside her is Vice Chairman of the Local School Committee, and Nancy also Chair the Building Committee. Immediately to my right-left here is Phil Zelico, Phil will be doing the presentation tonight relative to the sale of the Warren article. On the end is Pam Harding-Bryant, Lee Stuntz, and Issa Zimmerman, Superintendent of Schools. Mr. Moderator, I'd ask your indulgence to have the Chairman of the Building Committee introduce the members of the Building Committee that participate.
Sure, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mike. Serving on the Building Committee, Sharon Godet, served as Vice Chairman, I saw Sharon come in, but I don't know where she is down in front. Also serving on the Building Committee from the School Committee was Mike Scanlon and Lee Stuntz, from the Board of Selectmen, Doray Hunter, and we had four citizen representatives, Carol Place, who's also down in front, Ed Richter, right up in here, Duncan Wood, and Bill Fitzpatrick, who only served part of the term due to a conflict of interest. From our administration, we had Issa Zimmerman and Bill Ryan, Bill is over here, and the, from the town, on our Designer Selection Committee, we had Dean Charter.
Okay, now I will read the motion that will get the debate underway. For those of you who don't know, it is the motion that I read that is what we're voting on. It is not the Warren article. The Warren article kind of gets the motion in play. So I will read the motion, it's a very complex motion, and tonight we're going to put it up on the screen, and I think it'll take a couple of charts perhaps to get it in, because it's a long motion. So let me pull this table back out of the way, and I will read the motion in just a Remember when I said, "It's what I read that's important"? It says, "Mr. Zelico," it's going to be Mr. Scanlon, "moves that twelve and a half million dollars be appropriated for constructing, originally equipping and furnishing a new four-section elementary school, and that eight point eight million be appropriated for constructing an addition or additions to the Merriam School, and for remodeling, reconstruction, or making extraordinary repairs to the Merriam School, including as to each separate project costs incidental and related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow twelve point two million dollars, and eight point eight million dollars respectively under Chapter forty-four of the General Laws, or Chapter six forty-five of the Acts of nineteen forty-eight as amended. That the Board of Selectmen is authorized to petition the General Court for an act to permit the first principal payment on such borrowing to be not later than five years from the date of issue, and the last principal payment to be not later than twenty-five years from the date of issue. And that the School Committee is authorized to take any other action necessary to carry out these projects, provided however, that no debt may be incurred under this vote, except for up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars as to the new elementary school construction project, and up to five hundred and fifty thousand dollars as to the Merriam School addition and renovation project for planning and other preliminary expenses, until the State Department of Education has included the town's application for a state school construction grant as to each respective project on its list of completed project applications, showing the priority assigned, and provided that this vote shall not take effect with respect to each respective project until the town votes to exempt from the limitation on total taxes imposed by General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Paragraph twenty-one C, Proposition two and a half, amounts required to pay the principal of an interest on the borrowing authorized by this vote for each project. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I will now recognize Mr. Zelico to speak to this motion.
I hope you folks can all hear me. This is a presentation in which we're, the School Committee, going to ask you to vote to update and expand our elementary school. Presentation has five parts. We're going to describe a problem, describe the process we used in tackling it, describe the plan the process came up with, tell you the price, and outline the choice that you all will make tonight. First, let me give you a little background. What I want you to do for a moment is to imagine that each of you were living in Acton in the nineteen sixties, so say nineteen sixty-five. If you were living in Acton in nineteen sixty-five, these are the schools you would have known about. There was a town school, the town school used to be the high school, it was built in nineteen twenty-seven, nineteen twenty-seven, and then, when the new high school was built, it then turned into a small elementary school. During the nineteen fifties, in three phases of construction, what became known as the McCarthy School was also built, also a small-sized elementary school, which by the nineteen sixties had become effectively merged together to form one elementary school that has since become known as McCarthy Town. You would also have known about the Merriam Elementary School, that was opened for business in nineteen fifty-nine. That's where we were, say nineteen sixty-five. What happened then? What happened was, the enrollment of students in the town schools went up, and went up rapidly, and then the town then said, "What's our desired class size?"" And the desired class size the town arrived at, for the first time in nineteen sixty-six, sixty-six, was a desired class size of twenty-five in the classroom. Now, I emphasize that, because some people think that the idea of having twenty-two, twenty-five kids in the class is a new idea here in Acton. It is a more than thirty-year-old idea, and it was repeated in town report after town report by the then-Superintendent, Bill O'Connell. Well, the enrollment growth plus that desired class size led the town to start adding schools. First, they built the Douglas School, that opened for business in nineteen sixty-six. The class sizes kept going up, so they built another school, the Gates School. At the time they debated it, no one knew it would be called the Gates School, it was, during the debates, it was called the Spruce Street School. Now we know it as the Paul Gates M.D. Elementary School, opened for business nineteen sixty-eight. That wasn't enough. The class sizes still kept going above twenty-five, and the Superintendent said, "That's not good enough." The town voted, and the Conant School was built. It opened for business in nineteen seventy-one. That wasn't good enough either. The enrollment went up over twenty-five again, and the town was actually getting ready to build yet a fourth, a fourth new elementary school, when they paused and noticed that the enrollment was actually starting to go down again. In fact, the peak year of elementary school enrollment in this town was school year nineteen seventy-four, seventy-five. But they were on the verge of building yet another school. After seventy-four, seventy-five, enrollment began dropping. The low point was in nineteen eighty-six, eighty-seven, and in fact, after it had dropped a while, they actually closed the Merriam School. That was in nineteen eighty-one. So now where we are today? We start, just as we did then, with a town policy on class size. That policy was formally adopted after several readings and so forth, in February nineteen eighty-eight. The town policy that was adopted in February nineteen eighty-eight is, ten years later, still the policy we have today, still the policy with which we are trying to comply. You see the class size up there, grades K to three, less than or equal to twenty-two students, grades four to six, less than or equal to twenty-five. In fact, at the time that policy was adopted in nineteen eighty-eight, it was not a break from the past, as you can see, similar policies had been in effect for more than two decades, and in fact, Doray Hunter will note that we had a policy de facto, almost exactly identical to that policy, ten years before that one was formally passed. And as in the past, enrollment went up. Since that low year of eighty-six, eighty-seven, enrollment has gone up already forty-two We started taking measures, as they did in the past. One of the first steps was to reopen the Merriam School, which after being shut for twelve years, and actually being rented out for other commercial purposes, was reopened in nineteen ninety-three. But the Merriam School, which is actually a relatively small school, you'll hear more about that, increased our classroom capacity by only seventeen percent. So where are we today? Where are we today? First, we have class sizes today in grades one through six, and I'm counting grades one through six, because the kindergarten enrollments this year are anomaly, because we changed the entry date for eligibility for kindergarten this year, which artificially depressed class size for kindergarten. In grades one through six, we have class sizes in the range of twenty-four to twenty-seven, which would have gotten the attention of Bill O'Connell in nineteen sixty-six. Classes in compliance with our policy, the policy we've had formally for ten years, informally possibly for twenty years, in grades one through three, compliance is zero, zero. In grades four through six, more than forty-five percent of the classes are over the ceiling, and nineteen percent are right at it. Now, please, I can say much more as to why we think low class sizes matter in education. So please feel free to ask me about our analysis of the value of class size, and I will be happy to enlarge on our conclusions on that point. But let me say more about where we are. We conducted an enrollment study, and this chart shows you some of the initial results of that study. Again, if you have questions about the methodology of this study, please ask. I actually served on the Subcommittee that supervised the statistical work. I'll be happy to enlarge on it for you. I'll give you the details of how the cohort survival method was applied in this case, and so on. But let me mention two key points about this chart. First, you notice it goes up to a peak, and then slowly begins to decline again. Why is that happening? You know why that's happening in your neighborhood. Kids grow out, the houses regenerate, new kids move in, as empty nester sell their houses to other families, and so you get a cyclical rising and falling of enrollment. But that cycle, and this is the second key point, that cycle is not as pronounced as it was in the past, because the household sizes in Acton have actually already gotten much, much lower than they were in the nineteen seventies. People are already having smaller families. There is not much lower for household sizes to go unless families stop having children altogether. So we expect actually a very, very slow decline in the next phase of this cycle. And let me add just one footnote to this point. These numbers are low. When we did the statistical work, we deliberately used a methodology that was just about the lowest methodology we could come up with. Why? Because in the early seventies, the town had done some other studies on enrollment that were way high, and we almost got burned by that. So we were very anxious to, if anything, err on the side of being too low, because we had to restore the credibility that the experience of the nineteen seventies might have sacrificed. And in fact, I can prove to you that we actually are too low. You can see it already, in this year, we expected twenty-two ninety, the actual as of today is twenty-three oh five, which means we're already actually at just about the nineteen ninety-eight enrollment, and in fact, that's artificially low, because we changed the entry age for kindergarten this year, which probably kept anywhere from thirty to fifty kids out of the enrollment pool for kindergarten this year. If that's right, actually the enrollment this year would have been pushing the number we targeted for nineteen ninety-nine now, and the peaks are going to be closer to twenty-five hundred, and out by the year two thousand and five, we'll actually be closer to the sizes we have now. So what this means, then, is more than a hundred additional students on top of the already overcrowded classes, expected by two thousand and one, possibly many more, possibly two hundred more, for the reasons I just mentioned. Future compliance with our town policy, nearly zero in all grades. Plus, we now have as part of our school district, the Integrated Preschool, which we're obligated to provide under state law, which, and this is not counted in any of those enrollment numbers, already enrolls fifty students, and that number is also rising. Now, you may think to yourselves, "Just an obvious question. Okay, I get it, their enrollment's going back up to what it was like in the seventies, so why don't they just reopen the schools back to the capacity they had in the seventies, and the schools that handled that capacity in the seventies can handle the capacity now? Seems obvious." Now let me explain why it's not so obvious. There are two columns on this chart. The left-hand side are the planning assumptions at the time Conant was built, when they were planning Conant, in nineteen sixty-nine. This is what they thought they would need when they built their last elementary school for Acton, and I'm going to contrast that for how we're actually using the classrooms now. Nineteen sixty-nine, they expected we'll need no more than six classrooms for kindergarten, because it's only going to be half-day, and we'll double up the classrooms. We now, in the current system today, use nine classrooms for kindergarten, and if, we have been told by the state to expect that they may mandate all-day kindergarten, in which case, we will immediately then have to go up to at least fourteen classrooms for kindergarten. Second category, SPED. SPED stands for Special Education. Now, this is an interesting graphic. In nineteen sixty-nine, they expected to have only two classrooms allocated completely to Special Education. Why? Well, I went back and looked up how many kids were enrolled full-time in Special Education during our peak years of the mid-nineteen seventies. You know what the answer was? Number of kids full-time enrolled in Special Education, they used other names for it back then, like remedial reading, so on, full-time enrollment? Ten, ten. Today, in Acton, we have nearly four hundred students enrolled full or part-time in Special Education program, nearly four hundred students. This is not a marginal program, that only affects a few severely disabled students. This is a program in which one out of every six Acton elementary school students are involved, some of them every day. Services must be provided. And let me emphasize here, this is a service we must provide. It is mandated by the current state law. Efforts not to provide this service produce very expensive lawsuits, and we have had such lawsuits, and indeed, they have been very expensive. So through bitter, painful experience, we have learned that this is a service that must be provided, and indeed, it is an important service. But that helps you understand two versus eleven point five. They expected five other purpose rooms, went down to three and a half. Interesting note here, what happened after the mid-nineteen seventies, when the enrollment went down, is they used those riches to open up rooms for art, and rooms for music, and all sorts of other special program rooms. As you'll learn in a moment, all that went away, when the enrollment went back up again. Unless we build, we'll never get it back. I believe. But fascinating, nineteen sixty-nine, they planned, on their criteria then, to have ninety-one classrooms available for regular instruction. Today, thirty years later, we will not meet the goal they had in nineteen sixty-nine for regular classrooms in our system. Next slide. Now what I just described, we get to only through what's another big feature of our problem. I've mentioned class size, now let me talk for just a minute about the room squeeze, the room squeeze. You may have noticed on that previous graph, that in sixty-nine, they planned a hundred four rooms, and in nineteen ninety-nine, we expect to use a hundred and ten. Where'd the six come from? We haven't built any new schools. Bullet one, we now use modulars. We now have already bought and used four temporary classrooms. All of our plans assume the continued use of these temporary classrooms, because we've already paid for them. Second, we now actually borrow or rent two classrooms. There's a real irony here. In nineteen sixty-nine, you read the town reports, they talked about having to rent two classrooms from the Church of the Good Shepherd. A month ago, we were negotiating with Saint Matthew's Church about the possibility of renting two classrooms. Seems like some things just don't change that much. So we're going to have to find or borrow or rent two classrooms, actually these in particular classrooms, for the Integrated Preschool, which is now borrowing space at the Blanchard Elementary School in Boxborough, but they're being pushed out. Third, we have no real classroom for art, for music, or for world language instruction. Real classroom, oh, that's a room, say, eight hundred square feet large. Now, that's a statistic, I just want to bring that statistic to life for a moment. Let's say you went to the Conant School, okay? You walk in the doors of the Conant School. Now, if you walked in the doors of the Conant School, you could, over on the right, there's a class of students in the library, listening to Storytime. Meanwhile, right outside of the library, in the hall, the band students are practicing. This is absolutely serious. And they are separated from the group inside only by the glass in the library windows, which look out on the school lobby and the band practice. Also in the lobby, behind the thin temporary walls of a small room constructed in a corner of the lobby, temporary, non-English speaking students are receiving instruction from their ESL teacher, as the band plays on. A few steps further on, you're over on the left now, you open the door from the lobby to the cafeteria, which doubles as a cafeteria and auditorium with stage. There you find another class of children, sitting on the floor just inside the door, participating in a vocal music class, their songs and the notes of their teacher's piano, competing with the instrumental music outside. Meanwhile, up on the stage in the cafeteria, but behind the curtain, twelve yards from the music class, a seriously disabled student struggles to hear and follow the directions of his physical therapist, and the band plays on. Not unique. Take a look at the Gates School. The Gates School, they have their regular classroom instruction, it's actually spilling out in the hallway, they do projects now actually out in the hall, in some cases. In Special Education, they have three special educators, and their assistants, sharing a room that was originally designed as a playroom, which aside from the crowded conditions, creates distractions, because it has to be situated right next to the gym. I mean, you put a playroom right next to the gym, right? It's not a playroom anymore. But there's more. Hardly any of the schools have a computer lab, worthy of the name. No schools have a full-sized classroom that can be used as a computer lab, or any other technology purpose, no science labs at court. Special Education, pupil services, projects are now held in halls, as I mentioned, sometimes even in storage closets, and it could get much worse, because the enrollment's going to go up by another hundred, maybe two hundred, and suppose the state mandates all-day kindergarten, as they've told us to expect. In that case, we have to find five more classrooms somewhere. We don't have five more classrooms somewhere, so we'd have to invent those somehow. So to summarize, two big problems. One, too many children, by the year two thousand and one, fifty percent more, and two, squeezed into too little space, with all kinds of sacrifices that go beyond class size. Now, that's the problem, let me describe the process. As you can imagine, that process, this being Acton, involved a whole sequence of committees. I will not tell you all about these committees. I will not read to you the names of the dozens of volunteers, from some of many of you out here now, who gave hundreds of hours of their time to those committees. I would like to honor them, but it would take too long frankly, to read all the names. Let me look at the next slide. And there was outreach. Naturally, of course, we and the architects have consulted with every relevant town agency, including all the relevant environmental agencies, the fire chief, everyone, about how these new schools would impact them, and we've tried to involve the community. As this points out, we've held at least twenty meetings in the community, just in about the last three months. So we've had a process that's tried to be very inclusive. So let me tell you now about the plan. As I launch into this plan, please feel free to ask me about our analysis of other alternatives. I'm not going to go through a time-consuming analysis of all of them, but if you're interested, please feel free to ask, happy to talk about it. But let me tell you the plan we have chosen, which is the plan that you have before you tonight. First, build a new school. Now, that first bullet's kind of interesting, that is, how is it that we get thirty-seven cent dollars? Turns out, the state of Massachusetts, if you build the way they want you to build, gives you sixty-three percent back on your building dollar. It's automatic, you get in the queue, you will be paid. Now, one of the things this means for us, for example, is, we looked at the option of, "Why not renovate McCarthy Town instead of building a new school?" Well, the state said, "Excuse me, the McCarthy building is a wooden building, we don't invest the hard-earned monies of Massachusetts taxpayers in renovating wooden buildings." Thank you very much. So one way you get thirty-seven cent dollars... So one way you get 37 cent dollars is by building brick schools, and that's one reason why we're building a new school. The new school gives you 28 regular classrooms, which is seven more than in the current McCarthy Town. It will create a school that will become the largest elementary school in our town. Most of our elementary schools run at about 450, 500 students. This school will actually end up housing nearly 700 students, we expect. That's a big elementary school. About 650 students in regular instruction, and about 40 students in full-time Special Education. But those students will be compensated by the fact that this new school will have a full complement of Special Education and other program rooms, which by the way, the state requires us to build to get those 37 cent dollars. And we've got a flexible design. A flexible design for the schools, in the sense that we're designing all the extra program rooms so they can be converted to classrooms if that's necessary, if some of those assumptions turn out badly, and too much enrollment, all-day kindergarten, can you handle it? We're trying to build that into the design. But also because it's flexible for the schools, because we're going to come to you possibly in a couple of years to talk about what we need to do about the junior high and the senior high. And we're trying to build in flexible designs that will give us the maximum ability to accommodate those building needs by locating this on the central campus. And finally, it's flexible for the town, because our hope might be that perhaps as the McCarthy Town school goes out of use, that could be turned over to a lot of functions, including perhaps functions the town might use. The town might decide to demolish McCarthy and keep the town building for offices, a lot of possibilities. And by the way, you will be asked to approve whichever possibility is chosen. So you're going to decide what we're going to end up doing with McCarthy Town. And then there's Merriam renovation and expansion. The new Merriam will almost be a new school. It will be about 75% larger than the current Merriam. The current Merriam, when it was built, they didn't even build it to have kindergartens in it, because kids didn't go to kindergartens in the 1950s. There wasn't a state mandate even to provide half-day kindergartens. It's a small school. It'll have 21 regular classrooms, seven more than the current Merriam, and it will add core facilities. Core facilities is one of those black box jargon words that educators use. Let me tell you what core facilities mean. Core facilities mean that Merriam's going to get a library. You say, oh gee, but Merriam has a library right now. What they have done is they have converted a classroom into a library. Well, what's wrong with that? Classroom conversion. Here's the, what's wrong with that, is you design a classroom, classroom's supposed to hold a teacher and about 25 kids, right? Right. That's the way they designed, teacher, about 25 kids. Problem is, the library in an elementary school is also supposed to hold about 10,000 books. Turns out to be hard to fit teacher, 25 kids, and 10,000 books into 800 square feet, but they're very tiny books. So what happens is, Merriam doesn't really have a real library. They have a tiny fraction of the collection an ordinary elementary school library would have. That's what we mean by adding core facilities. You know, there's no nurse's office, there's no principal's office, it's all cut-up classrooms. Take a look at the Merriam gym sometime. A full complement of Special Education and other program rooms. And now let me talk about two projects, spacing issues. It turns out that you have to have both projects to get the synergy that allows you to build them both. But let me, what does that mean? That means that here's the way it'll work. You start building the new school in January 1999, it's complete in July of the year 2000. Then you start Merriam. And what happened, then you have to ask yourself simple questions. While we're rebuilding Merriam, what happens to all the kids going to school at Merriam? Huh? 500 kids, where are they going to go to school while we're building their, while you're using the buzzsaws and their building? They go to McCarthy Town, which has not yet been turned over or demolished, but McCarthy Town has already moved into the new school. So you move McCarthy Town population into new school, Merriam population into McCarthy Town, you rebuild Merriam, rebuild Merriam complete December 2001, the Merriam students can move back into Merriam, and now McCarthy Town is open to do what you wish with it. But if you hadn't done it that way, there'd be no place to put the Merriam kid, if you're continuing to use McCarthy Town as a full-time elementary school. Net effects of this plan. And by the way, I'm not going to say a lot here now about cost controls and project management, but please, please feel free to ask us about project management and cost control. We'll be happy to elaborate on that score. Net effects, you get 14 more regular classrooms. That's basically a 15% enlargement, which means that without building a sixth elementary school, we have five now, we'll have five then, you get basically the equivalent of adding a sixth school, because we'll have basically gotten the same kind of bang we got from reopening Merriam. And second, we have targeted for replacement and renovation, the oldest buildings in the town, which therefore reduces your maintenance burdens and risks. Merriam is still carrying its original mechanical and electrical system from the 1950s, and its original HVAC. So you're reducing your maintenance burdens and risks, and by locating them on the central campus, you get to use the sewers, and if we renovated and expanded at Gates or Conant, for example, we'd be having a problem with overburdened septic systems. Other net effects, you add needed space for district-wide services. One of the things this means, and this is a big point, I've rented a lot of parents from, here at the school saying, yeah, but how does this help my school? My school? And one, it helps them instantly. First of all, of course, kids can redistribute themselves, so that you could get, in theory, a 15% net reduction in all class sizes throughout the system in one year, should parents choose that option, which thank goodness, we have a system that allows parents that kind of choice. But that's not all. What you do is you tackle the room squeeze that I talked about. Let me just give you a small illustration of that. Douglas, right now, cuts up a classroom, they use half the classroom as kind of a computer technology space, and they use half the classroom for Special Education services. Now suppose Douglas could shift just enough Special Education services to these schools, McCarthy, the new school, or the Merriam school, to release that half a classroom. It doesn't just release half a classroom. It now basically means Douglas has a whole classroom. That means Douglas could add a new fifth grade section, reducing the class sizes for all their fifth graders, or Douglas could decide to have a classroom for art. I mean, you just go on. It offers all sorts of opportunities for that school, and it could do that overnight. So the net effects could affect the whole system right away. And of course, class size. Class sizes drop from 24 to 27 in grades one through six, and that could be higher, that's why the 24 plus, 27 plus, to 21 to 24, which finally complies with our policy. We have not complied with our town policy on class size since 1991. Oh, those fortunate children of the 1980s, who went to school during a time when we complied with our town policy on class size and had the special program room. And let me note that if enrollment goes down, so that you can meet the class size policy in fewer rooms, that then allows us to go back to what we did in the 80s, of opening more special program rooms in all the schools. But we're going to be so space constrained because of the different way we utilize rooms now, that if you don't build, that option will never happen again. The kids of the next decade will never have, in my view, the kinds of opportunities the kids of the 1980s had, we'll be going backwards, in terms of the services we provide to our children. Now let me talk about the price. Talk about the plan, now it's time to talk about the price. First, the new school, 12.2. You heard that in the motion. Merriam renovation in addition, 8.8 million. State contribution, 63%. So, and let me just be clear, we don't go forward with this project unless we get the state contribution. No state, no project. So that 63% is not a wish and a hope. There won't be any project if we don't get it. That means the raw cost, right up front, is 7.8 million. Let's just do a quick look at the tax impact of 7.8 million. This is the capital cost only. In the peak year, the tax impact that the additional taxes a homeowner of a $300,000 house would pay, which is the standard metric the town uses, $212. Average during the first 10 years would be $143 per year. That's the additional tax impact for this plan. Now, what, what does this mean? You could say, well, to some people in this town, they look at this and say, that's the price of a Patriots game. There are other people in this town who say to themselves, that is a painful stretch of a household budget that for me is already very tight. And then there's another school of thought, I'll tell you, I'm a Republican, so I have maybe a different school of thought. My school of thought on this is that if it's, $1 is too much, if the $1 is going to be needless and wasteful. But all of you will have your own criteria for evaluating those numbers, and what you buy for those numbers. That's the spectrum, and you can place yourself inside that spectrum. But we didn't just stop with the capital cost. A lot of people would say, yeah, but aren't you going to have to staff those schools and maintain them? Yes, and we studied that with some care, and we put together studies on how much it would cost to staff the schools, we rolled them back into constant 1997 dollars, we worked those in another committee called the Lexicon Committee, and this is what we came up with. This is a synthesis of the cost in the first 10 years of, one, the capital costs, including interest on the loan, two, operating costs, including all the new staff that we would buy to staff the school. And by the way, that's not in this year's budget at all, it's not in this year's motion, it's not in this year's motion. You're going to buy that staff next year. But we're telling you about it now, because we want to be upfront with you about it, now. And third, it's the maintenance cost. The maintenance cost, by the way, this is a quagmire. Suppose I ask you, you own a 40-year-old house. I say, tell me how much it will cost to maintain your 40-year-old house over the next 10 years. Now, if you give me a number that has decimal points, I'm not going to believe you. And it's going to, well, I don't know, it depends on how much I'm willing to spend, how aggressive I am about maintenance, does the roof look soft? I mean, you can just go on and on. It's a very soft number. But the basic point here is that what we're doing is, we are renovating old buildings and replacing with new buildings, and new buildings turn out to generally cost less to maintain, not necessarily in routine utility bills, because those are going to be higher because the new buildings are bigger, because you don't have to worry about buying a new roof, or buying a new mechanical system, and so on. So we've tried to roll all those numbers together and into an estimate, and we see the net cost, and by the way, this is all in constant 1997 dollars. That's 6 million. If you don't like our maintenance numbers, boost it up. 6.3 million, 6.5 million. Our architects think the maintenance numbers that we've estimated for the future are too low, so actually, they would actually have the net difference lower than 6. But I want to do, all I want to do here is give you a sense of the scale, that's all. And for example, the scale here. They turned my voice off, now it's on again. If you can't hear me, just cup your hand to your ear and go, eh? I'll get the message. So just a sense of scale. That's what we're trying to do, and we're also trying to tell you that we did think about the operating costs, we have tried to be upfront, and put together a synthesis of how much we think it'll altogether cost the town, and give you a sense of how much that would be. So now let me go to the final point.
Let me just take this opportunity to say, Ms. Cho, would you, would you let people know who are coming into the hall, that they can now sit in the non-voter section, and anybody who would like to move in certainly can do that to kind of consolidate some space? We can see about 960 in here, I think there's about another 100 seats, as I count them, that still could be used, but if we could consolidate a little, it'd be helpful, and we can put people into the non-voter section. Excuse me, Mr. Zorko, go ahead.
Not at all. Good news, this is the last slide. How to think about your choice. Three dimensions. First dimension, what's your educational choice? If you don't vote this motion, you have made a choice, you have made a choice for something else. And I would describe that choice as, are you going to go forward, or are you going to go backward? Going forward, look around the country. The whole country is going forward to buying lower class sizes, even to 20 or below. California has passed a law that gives school districts $650 per pupil if they have a class that's 20 or lower. The president today, in today's Globe, announced that he's going to try to spend billions of dollars on class size to hire new teachers. Of course, if you don't have the classrooms, you have no place to put the teachers. Officials said the program is designed to get at the sticky issue of class size in kindergarten through 12th grade, a problem that has been highlighted with increasing frequency by a wide range of groups, including the Republican Governors Association. Or look at other towns. Please ask me for details about our analysis of class size and what's going on in your neighboring towns. Happy to tell you. That's where everybody else is going. Or we could go backwards. We could go back to a past that never was, because I told you that even in the 1960s, they wanted class sizes kind of like what we want now. Some might say, our, our goals aren't even ambitious enough. And I want you to think, when you think about going backwards, think about the indirect effects too. You know, we have to go out and hire teachers every year. If you were in the teacher market, would you want to work for the same pay and teach 20 to 30% more children in crowded facilities? The answer is, yeah, we'll be able to hire teachers, all right, will they be the best teachers? There are lots of effects, educationally. Financial effects. The con side is pretty clear here. This project costs money, it costs tax money, it's your money, it matters to you, whatever you wanted to do with it. That's a con. But there's a pro here too, and I want you to be sure to think about it. The pro is, and I'm just going to express this in very cynical terms, the value of your real estate. We did a survey in 1995 of people who had lived in Acton five years or less, in other words, recent home buyers. 88% of them told us that the quality of the schools was a major reason for how they're buying their homes. We repeated the survey this year, 1997. It changed, it went from 88% to 89%. But again, let me try to give you a true-life color to that statistic. Somebody in the community gave me this note, he's here tonight, in the auditorium, quote, "Three years ago, my family seriously considered purchase of two specific houses, one in Wilmington that we've been renting for three years, and another here in Acton. They were the same age and condition. The house in Wilmington offered a larger yard, an easier commute, and was 40% less expensive. Wilmington had just defeated a school override, and we felt that Acton had better schools and a firmer commitment to school quality, so we reached deeper into our budget and paid an extra $70,000 to move here." Now, by the way, this is not just an idea for people who are thinking of selling their house and getting out of Acton. There's another person who's also here in this auditorium, who called me over the weekend and said, you know, I'm still living in Acton, I've lived here for decades, but it just turns out that the appreciation of the real estate value of my house, without having to move out of Acton, gave me the money that allowed me to put three kids through college. And things like, you know, do you have to pay mortgage interest on your house, what kind of home equity loans you can get, all that's determined by the home value issues. There was a letter in the Beacon last Thursday from a lady who said she'd lived in Barrington, Rhode Island, which had a wonderful reputation, is an affluent town with superb schools, they defeated an override, the reputation sank, she lost 1/6 of the value of her house. Now, I don't really care what number you want attached to this. If you think those numbers are too high, you attach the number that you like. The point here, again, is to get a sense of the scale, is you're talking about a con that's measured in hundreds of dollars, you're talking about a pro, it's a contingent pro, but it's a pro that would be measured in tens of thousands of dollars. So just again, a sense of scale. But let me go to the final point. I want to be less cynical now. I want to talk about the identity of the town. You know, a lot of the identity of any community is bound up in our public institutions and public places. That's true as a country, it's true as a state, it's true as a town. And Becky Canely had a wonderful piece in last Thursday's Beacon about... And Becky Caneely had a wonderful piece in last Thursday's Beacon about the character of the town. All right? And there are a lot of things that go into that, you know, conservation land, library, a lot of things. And, you know, people ask me, says, "What is going to happen to the kids if this is defeated?" And I said, "You know, the kids will get by. They will get by. You know, the kids will graduate from high school. They'll still go to college." Point is here is, for Acton, getting by isn't good enough. In 1775, when the British marched on Concord, Acton Minutemen ran to the North Bridge, and they were the ones who won the very first engagement of the American Revolution. They didn't wait for the Concord guys to get there first. They didn't just get by. In the 1960s, when they built school after school after school, a legacy that we've now been living on for a long time, they decided not to just get by. You know, that was a hard decision back then. I looked up the Old Town Reports from 1968. You know, the Gates School passed by 283 to 77. And I bet there was a really hot debate at that town meeting, and those 77 had some really good points. But the town had a commitment not to getting by, but to excellence, excellence. We believe that our kids should be able to compete on an equal footing with kids from all those neighboring towns, not just getting by, not conceding, "Well, they're richer. They're going to do better," on an equal footing. We spend three-quarters of the per pupil expenditure on our kids that they spend on their kids, but we get about the same bang for our buck. It's a commitment to excellence. So that's really the choice you have to make today, is how you want to think of our identity as a community. You know, I thought back when I was writing this presentation on those people. I looked up the names of the people who made those decisions in the late 60s. Ed Richter actually was on the school committee back then. He was on the building committee this time. I didn't recognize a lot of the names. Some of the people aren't here anymore. Some of them have passed away. They aren't here to hear people talk about the Paul Gates School. When they voted on it, it didn't even have a name. But we're grateful to them. We're grateful for them for giving us a legacy that some of them today cannot even see. Well, folks, it's our turn.
We're now, we're here from Mr. Hunter representing the Board of Selectmen, and I believe has some slides as well, and that's why he's speaking from where he is. Did you have more than that, Doree, or are you quitting when you're ahead?
That's the message, but I could never be that brief. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to speak to you tonight from a perspective. The perspective is that of having been for almost 20 years an elected official of this town, both on the school committee and the Board of Selectmen. I was involved in the closing and the preservation of Miriam, and I had the honor to be on this school building committee, which is sort of coming full cycle, to rejuvenate the reopened Miriam that we preserved for use as a school. But this is really about the children. My wife, I'm sorry. My wife and I are privileged to have three wonderful children, and in the fullness of time, in the very short fullness of time, we expect them all, based on what they learned in Acton, to receive their PhDs. I have three grandchildren who live in my house and are attending Delco School. I want them to get that same basis here. The Selectmen support the school building proposals. Why? Because we have a sound enrollment study, and without going into a lot of specifics, suffice it to say that I've had some connection with enrollment studies, and I think was the first to point out to Phil the fallaciousness of the 1970s study, and we were under considerable pressure in the beginning of the 80s in declining enrollment to simply get rid of Miriam. People were standing on the present, then-present curve and simply projected it out and said, "You'll never need the school." Well, we found they were wrong. The Selectmen are satisfied that we do need two more class sections. Town McCarthy is an old, jumbled building. It probably has uses, but it's not a candidate for renovation as a new school. Miriam has a great site, but the school committee's anguished decision in 1981 to close it demonstrates that the structure was the least satisfactory functional in the system and the judgment of those of us that were on the school committee at that time. Actually, Miriam has a core area. It has one classroom wing. The original plan for Miriam called for two classroom wings. It was built smaller than the actual plan. It's always been small. It's pleasant. It's nice. It won an architectural prize for exterior appearance. I wish the architect had provided a little more room inside. This is an opportunity to use that great site on which we agonized over closing a school located there, even though it was clearly the one that should be closed. The build, shift, students, renovate, and enlarge scenario that has been outlined to you is an intelligent, good way to go about this building project without impacting on the children. And as you've heard, it leveraged the state reimbursements, and we obtained in the end two like-new school buildings. Now, the Selectmen are very sensitive about tax rates. Because we're the group in government who have responsibility for administering the setting and collection and assessment practices that result in the subtraction of money from your wallets four times a year, we're very sensitive about tax rates. Any tax rate is a balance between services and costs. You do not get services without paying for them. Yes, we are painfully aware that we are the 15th most expensive tax rate at the moment in the state. There's no getting around that. But on the other hand, we have services that many people in the state do not have either. No one should deny that any tax increase, and we are pyramiding tax increases, that any tax increase is not difficult for some of those that live among us, some of those people who are on fixed income. And by saying fixed income, I don't necessarily mean poor. As you get to where I am currently in my working career, you begin to realize that in the foreseeable future, probably not as soon as some of you would like, for my case, but in the foreseeable future, you're going to stop working and retire, and your income is essentially going to become fixed by your pension or your investments. And you may become more aware that behind you is a dynamic requirement on your pocketbook called taxes, which tend to increase even if your income doesn't increase. And we are talking about a property tax that approximates for many people now what the state income taxes. We are aware this is a burden, and we're very serious about trying to deal with that. And in that regard, you will see in the motion that interesting language about home rule petition, which is, and I want to give John Murray great credit for this, is an idea that John, who is our resident financial genius, has come up with and the Selectmen are enthusiastic about, to attempt, and I want to stress the word "attempt," this is not a done deal, to attempt to get special permission from the legislature. You know what the chances are sometimes when you ask the legislature to act. It acts quickly, but we can try. To lock in the current low interest rates. It is felt that we may be at a historic low in interest rates, and they will probably go up in the foreseeable future. Normally, these projects are financed by a temporary borrowing from the state through the state for a period of time until the state reimbursements begin, and then you take out permanent financing and the state reimburses you as you then pay principal and interest, normally only having paid interest in the meantime. There is a state law that says you may not go forward with permanent borrowing without paying principal. Now, that doesn't necessarily govern in the marketplace, but that governs us under state law. We need, if we can, to get the state to release us from that, and then we may be able to go directly to permanent financing by combining it with about $8 million that the town is, in any event, going out for permanent financing for projects already voted. And this may, again, stress the word "may," save us some interest costs, which could amount to very considerable amount of money over the time that we're borrowing this money. But in addition to the state legislature's wisdom, and that is always said sarcastically, we also have a number of regulatory hurdles that we have to get over, but the benefits are worth the efforts, and the downside is only delaying the permanent borrowing for the already voted town money for several months, which might cost us something on the order of $10,000 to $12,000. So we're going to give that the college try, but I suggest you do not count on any of that tonight in making your decision and voting this project, because we can't even quantify the number. I mention this to first explain what that language about home rule is in the motion before somebody asks that obvious question, and secondly, to demonstrate that we are trying to do everything we can to keep the impact of this project as low as possible. Now, one of the reasons the Selectmen support this project is that it is part of a capital plan that has been a number of years in existence and is modified, tweaked yearly, and the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, and the School Committee, all meeting together, have agreed upon, which lays out a method of dealing with the town's large and urgent capital needs. In the recent past, under that plan, you have voted to build the library, to rebuild the Memorial Library, which, as you all know, is currently underway, and you have voted to create the North Acton Recreation Area, which is also well underway. Indeed, the landscaping work up there is about 95 percent done, and I understand that the pond is already half-full. In the immediate future, you should be aware that behind the projects you're standing tonight, there are other capital projects coming. We anticipate in the very near future a capital project to do something about the already 200 percent overcrowded police station, and as you've already heard, there's going to be projects in the foreseeable future for the regional schools. Now, I would submit that there is much to debate here tonight, and there are also some things which I think are perhaps, in my humble view, potential distractions in that debate. One would be to have a long discussion tonight about the future of the Town McCarthy Building. It is, to some degree, imponderable at this point. But through the Miriam experience, we know, I happen to know, because I ended up being the chairman of the committee, to find the reuses for that building, which was sort of an awesome project when it started, but the awesomeness only lasted about 30 minutes. We have some experience in how to keep a building alive and well and useful without it spending tax dollars on the Miriam law. We are also about, I hope, to enter into a renegotiation of the regional agreement, and that structure could conceivably form some sort of a chip on that table. We also may be aware that in reconfiguring the regional schools, that the spaces in Town McCarthy, or some of them, might be useful as administrative space. Those are questions which we cannot further define for you tonight, and I suggest that they best be discussed at a later time. Another potential distraction is discussion of the immediately passed process, timing of the process which brings us here tonight, or the design work on the schools, which is indeed still somewhat in process. There have been a number of criticisms of the process which has gone before tonight, and indeed, I have joined in some of those criticisms, and that hopefully they will provide lessons for the future, because we presumably are going to repeat this process for the regional schools in the coming years. However, I would suggest that you judge the product that has been brought to the meeting and not the means by which it got here. Another potential distraction, I think, is to spend a lot of time trying to discuss the effectiveness of the management of the upcoming construction project, that is upcoming if you voted affirmatively and if town meeting, pardon me, if the voters approve the following referendum. The timing of the construction periods is a normal and ample time in my period and will not be rushed. And there is also a matter in the motion which I want to comment on, which might not have generated a question, but that you should understand and goes to what we hope will be the effectiveness of the management of the project. That is, there are words in the motion conveying this project or the authority of the school committee. Those of you who are up on your charter will remember that the Acton Public Schools are technically a department of the town, even though administered by an elected school committee and their employed superintendent. Under the charter, the town manager is the chief procurement officer, and without the language in the motion, the school building project would go forward with the schools having primary interest in the project, but the technical project management being vested in the town manager. As those of you who are veteran town meeting attenders know, these are two organizations with very different culture and procedures, and we anticipated that it would be a somewhat awkward form of administration. So at the Selectmen's suggestion, we have included words in the motion which are permissible under the charter to convey the procurement authority for this project, which means management, approval, change orders, et cetera, et cetera, to the school committee in the sense of getting a more effective management. Lastly, there's already been a reference to it, but this school construction on the central campus is made possible by the municipal sewer project that you voted at the last annual town meeting, which is projected to come online in the fall of 2000, just in time for this school project. It's important, I believe, for you to understand the status of that project, so we're going to have a very brief update on that by Nancy Tavernier, who I will defer to in a moment, but I would remind you again of the first slide. Thank you.
My purpose here tonight is to assure you very briefly that the sewer project that was voted last year and the proposed school building projects will dovetail very nicely with each other in three ways: access, timing, and cost. The first question on access is whether or not the new school and the expanded Miriam School will have access to the sewer system. This is a map of the first sewer district that was voted last year, and that is well underway to becoming a reality. The schools are in this area up here. They are in the district. They were last year. Any new construction or expansion has been planned for. The ultimate destination of the sewage will be down here in Adams Street. This was all part of the plan. So the answer is yes, they will have access. The second question on timing is whether or not the sewers will be ready when the schools are, and the answer to that is yes. Work on the sewer project is proceeding on schedule. We have a new consultant, Woodard and Kiran, and there are five elements to the project. Preliminary design began last summer, and we are almost finished with that and will soon move into the final design phase next month, which will be finished by the end of this year, 1998. At the same time, the permitting process is a parallel effort. We are pursuing both groundwater discharge, which we've been given preliminary approval for, and surface discharge into the river, both of those, one through the state DEP and the other through the federal EPA, and we're very optimistic for that. That permitting phase will be finished in June of 1998. And then, one year from now, construction will begin January 1999, and the full operation and startup of sewers is anticipated for fall of the year 2000, and that is exactly coordinated with the startup, the open doors of the new school, should that be approved. And in fact, the schools will be one of the largest users in the system, and it's very possible that they will be the first people online, because frankly, we will need their effluent to test out the startup of the system. So it actually works out very nicely for all of us. The final point is the cost, because those of you who were here last year made a very important decision as to cost. The decision at this town meeting last April was that the sewer system would be 100% user-funded. Therefore, the only tax impact of the $11.5 million sewer system is for you, the owners of the public properties, to pay for that capital share. And that’s about 15% of the district. That includes the schools, the South Acton Fire Station, and the Civil Defense Building. All of the other users of the system are private property owners, and they will pay their share of the capital cost plus a recurring annual cost. That tax share, to you, the taxpayers, is 5 cents on the tax rate, which on a $300,000 house is $15. And so I only wanted to remind you of that, so that $11.5 doesn’t get merged in with some of the numbers that you’re being asked to approve tonight. Thank you.
We’ll now have a presentation from Mr. Mackey from the Finance Committee.
Good evening. To get it right up front, the Finance Committee recommends passage of this warrant. It had a vote on December 16th that came down 6 to 2, 6 for, 2 against. I, the chair, only vote when to break the tie. With that in mind, I would like to use the next four or five charts, and hopefully, no more than 10 minutes, to help you put into perspective the, just exactly what you were voting on from a financial point of view. You know, I was really glad to see Mrs. Tavernier interject between me and engineer and two very eloquent lawyer-trained people. And Nancy put some money up there, and she put some schedules up, and I am going to fall back on the, my experience as an engineer, and you’re going to see number after number. I’m sorry, but that’s the job of the FinCom. Tonight, I’m going to try and share with you three pieces of information. I’m going to use a couple of charts to go over exactly what you and we on this floor have already agreed to. We will get to the impact there. For example, Sewers 1 has been agreed to, NARA has been agreed to, let’s remember that. This kind of encapsulates some information you had earlier. Secondly, I’m going to try to describe the changes you’re being asked to address tonight. Not just the building that we’re talking of, but what it takes to get the building to become an educational edifice, you know, we need teachers, et cetera. And finally, I have two charts that take your tax bill, money out of your pocket from about ’96 to ’03, that may be somewhat disconcerting, but I think it helps you judge what it is you’re voting on tonight. By way of synopsis, you can read that as fast as I can. Notice that I do have the right number for Sewers 1. Mrs. Tavernier made me make sure that that number was 5 cents, but I think that is very important. These are the things that you voted. In ’96, the library and NARA, and you said, “Yes, we want it. We’re willing to pay the price.” Last year, we had Sewers 1, a significant breakthrough for Acton, and we have Morrison, and we had some equipment for health, safety, and technology for the Acton Public Schools, what we’re going to talk about in extension tonight. Now, in keeping with what Mr. Hunter presented to you, a capital five-year plan, well, capital plan, I have presented here slightly different, and I put it in the order. This plan came out of three sessions, which appears to be becoming part of the infrastructure, that your school board, the school committee, Finance Committee, and Board of Selectmen meet at least three times a year, part of which is to develop this five-year, this capital plan. Remember, this plan didn’t exist three years ago. It was initiated for the first time on this floor two years ago. You are now in a position to put the top line, Acton Public Schools, in perspective with the other capital projects that we see coming down. The safety building is to take care of the police situation, as Mr. Hunter said. RJ Gray, we’ve put in there a placeholder at $17 million. Right now, again, as was brought out, the question about the regional agreement has got to be addressed and could drastically affect $17.5 million, but right now, best cost, $97, that’s it. And infrastructure is to keep the roofs going, things that can be bonded, so that we don’t get in a position, we were here last year, trying to fix heating and air conditioning out of operational expenses. Sewers 2 will come to you two years, when you expand to the next stage. And last but not least, in four years, we’ll come here and ask for an extension to the high school. This gives you a flavor of what is on our plate, what your elected, appointed, and hired officials think we need in the town. Whether we do it or not, of course, is up to you. I mentioned before that I spent years being an engineer, and when I was a young engineer, I used to run up to my boss or the people that controlled the money and said, “Look how wonderful it’s going to be.” And they very wisely looked at me and said, “Go away, little person.” And what they were doing, it took me years, it took me years to figure out, they wanted me to, you know, bring something to them, to say, “What is it going to take to use that beautiful widget or wadjet or whatever you were estimating? If it’s a building, what is it going to take to maintain the building? In the case of teachers, we need education, we need teachers.” So we’ve, and I think from a FinCom point of view, if you allow me to extend FinCom to resource management, which it is very, very important that you feel that your school committee are in control by accounting procedures, you can ask any question. You heard it tonight. In this particular point, I believe this is something a step in the right direction. I had occasion to bump into a colleague of mine from the Boxboro FinCom in the barber shop, and he had just turned at a meeting, and we’d been talking about this, and he encouraged me, he said, “We didn’t do it when we just went through the Boxboro upgrade, and we’re paying for it now.” Your committees have addressed it. The NARA, all the top two, four, five of them are in, almost in the budget for ’99, three of them in ’99, and will be within 2.5. There will be no override. The Acton Public School is projected to start their operating expenses in the year ’01, that’ll be in there. The Acton Boxboro, though you say that comes later, remember, they’re going to have to get some teachers to meet, you know. The demographic flow doesn’t go on a step function. One year, you’re okay, the next year, you jump up. It’s a wave, and that is put in there again as a placeholder, and I thank the committee for letting me have that information. Now, here it comes. This apparently is what we have, and it’s slightly different than the numbers you’ve been seeing, and let me bear with me. The top line, I use the term “bond.” This is the $21 million coming down to $7. This is the building I was talking about, getting the pipes in and getting it ready. The operation is your operational expenses. As you can see, in ’99 and ‘08, you just have bonding expenses. And then, all of a sudden, in ’01, they’re going to have to move approximately 6.5, well, you can’t have 6.5 teachers, seven teachers in to help the operating, and that will continue on out to ’03 and ’04. And I bring your attention to ’03. It looks in ’03 as a weak max out. The bonding expenses start down, and we go down from there in this particular issue. Now, to put this in, or complete it perspective as I can, we have worked very hard on how to make it clear to all of us, the least of which is me, the speaker. What, you know, we talk tax rate, and then we talk assessment, and we da-da-da-da-da. What we have here, if you had the mystical $300,000 house, in ’96, you paid around $5,400. ’97, you come with me, you’re about $57. Now, in ’98, because of reassessment, and we wanted to normalize this information, your house became $330, which your taxes also went up to just $1,600. And this is money out of your pocket. This is whether you pay the mortgage or you pay a tax yourself, this is what we pay as taxpayers. In ’98, it keeps going up, it looks like, you know. But this chart is very important. This is what you, we, as members, as citizens of Acton, have voted and committed ourselves to. This is nothing new. When you consider tonight what you’re going to be asked to vote on, the green is the increase tonight, out of your pocket, the $330,000 house. When, in ’99, we’re asking you to consider 89 extra dollars to get started, and then the green goes up further and further and further. However, I draw your attention in ’03, and one of the reasons I stopped ’03 on this chart is that that’s the max. In ’03, you will be asked to spend an additional $430. Now, if you have a calculator, that is an increase of 6.3% over what we have already committed ourselves to spend, 1/16. This is 6 cents on the dollar. I hope this has helped clarify where we’re coming from and what is being asked tonight. Let’s get on with the debate.
Are you going to use slides, Mr. Cadillac?
Yes.
You are? Okay, then I’ll stay here. I’ll recognize, now, Mr. Cadillac, for those of you who came into the room after we began, we’re going to designate these three microphones, two at the front, one in the back, one in the back, as microphones that you can speak from if you are opposed to the motion, and these three microphones, you will speak from if you are in favor of the motion. And what I will do is I’ll kind of rotate back and forth, one side to another, to make sure that the debate is evenly balanced. And with that, Mr. Cadillac.
Mr. Moderator, for those who may not know, myself, Gene Seifleid, and John Friendeville will make a joint presentation to save duplication, and if the School Committee members don’t mind, we need just a little bit of space so we can use the view graph as well, and we’ll move up there.
You’ve heard the argument in favor of the school-building project. We’ve taken a very careful look at the data, and we have a different perspective to present to you tonight. We all want to do the right thing for all of our children, and one of our concerns is that we look at the data about enrollment over the whole spectrum of the system, and this is one aspect of it that Charlie Cadillac will present to you. He will look at it over the long term, give you a historical perspective of enrollment, and he will also look at it K through 12, not just K through 6. We’ve taken a hard look at the projected savings and maintenance, and we think that they are really unrealistic, that there really isn’t a plan for any building to go out of service, so it is unrealistic in our judgment that maintenance savings are going to be significant. And John will give you a detailed perspective on that. And finally, we will talk about the impact on the tax rate, and what you’ve been shown so far is really the best case, because the $21 million is just the beginning. You were told there’ll be operating increases. You were told that there are other town needs, such as public safety needs. You were told that we have needs in the junior high and high school, and our data tonight will show you that the needs in the junior high and high school are very compelling. So we’re going to suggest to you that if all of these programs are implemented, that the tax increases, that your tax bill could actually double, so that it’s a very significant decision that we’re making tonight, because if we invest $21 million prematurely in the elementary schools, we’re not going to have the money we need to deal with some of the other issues. So we’re going to, our conclusion is that it’s premature to make this investment in two of our elementary schools, that we need to look at the overall needs. This architect is already asking for more money, and there is a history with this architect of significant cost overruns and schedule delays, so we’re very concerned that the $21 million is the low end, and that we should look at some less expensive options. With that, I’m going to hand it over to Charlie Cadillac.
First of all, really, the three main reasons that the schools have told us drive this thing is enrollment, class size, and to some extent, the differences between what we’re doing now educationally and 2025 years ago, and I will very quickly address all of these. I have a lot of information here, and just like Mr. Zelikow, I am not going to spend much time on it. If anybody asks questions, per Mr. Moderator’s suggestion, come on down if it’s something we can answer directly, or if you think it’ll interest more people, ask them. Here is some history. This is information, all information, by the way, that I’m showing you comes out of school reports. None of it is my own creation. This is going back into the 60s that you’ve heard about, the actual enrollment up to here, and the projected in K through 6, with 1 through 6 being the lower part of the bar, and kindergarten shown separately, because we only, at this point, have to accommodate one-half of whatever the kindergarten enrollment is. So this gives you a little sense of the cyclical enrollment that you’ve heard about. Keep that sort of in mind, because a lot of the other comments pertain to it. This is the peak that the schools’ projections show. Let me now show you some of the comments from the report of the Enrollment Subcommittee, which kind of puts all that, the projected part, in the proper perspective, and I’m going to read some of it for those of you who may not be able to see it. Well, the committee, by the way, agreed with all of this unanimously, and the first quote is that they expect the enrollment to peak at about $2,400 in the 2001 to 2002 year, and then to decline. This is a year ago. Since then, there have been some adjustments to that conclusion, which is really another reason why you have to look at all of these projections somewhat skeptically, because they do change. And that’s what the next quote says. These are verbatim quotes, except things in parentheses. It says enrollment projections are speculative, the projections that it is equally possible that the projections could be low or they could be high. That’s what projections are. It also tells us, and this is for the benefit of those, and I’ve had a couple of phone calls on this subject, that say, “Yeah, but look at all the new construction in Acton.” Well, we’ve had new construction in Acton for the last 40 years, and as it turns out, the total population of the town hasn’t really changed very much. It’s just one of those things. And this committee’s conclusion is that large numbers of new homes are unlikely to produce a substantial or rapid population growth in Acton, including the schools, and that they expect to, Acton, to follow its past pattern of cyclical school enrollment, and that school population, this is again K through 6, is expected to start declining. You remember the last graph after 2001? That the old highs are very unlikely to be reached, and all of this assumes economic stability, that, you know, if the economy changes, things could change dramatically downward. And the school enrollment could also be diminished somewhat by the opening of new private or charter schools, and we know as a fact that the charter school application is underway for Acton, and that could take a number of students out of these projections. And finally, that we can reasonably imagine the enrollments K through 6 to fluctuate between 1,800 and 2,400 in the next 10 to 20 years. Now, that’s between about here and about there. This high, by the way, the high in 1971 or so, ’73, when we opened kindergarten, which I should have pointed out, that’s the first kindergarten, ’73, the total population then, the total enrollment was 2,700. We’re not talking about reaching that We're not talking about reaching that level again by the conclusions of the schools' own Subcommittee. We have the same five buildings that we had back when we had the 2,700. And if anything, we have actually put an addition on the McCarthy Town Building back about 25 years ago. So we have the same space. You heard Mr. Zelikow very eloquently describe that, you know, there is a tremendous problem with space, anecdotal evidence about bands playing and so forth. Well, frankly, that was true back then, and I'll come back to that point in a second. Let's talk about class size. The statement that smaller classes are better is certainly logical. We kind of all intuitively feel that that's true, and it's a valid starting point. But when we're talking about spending the kind of money that's involved here, I think it's necessary to take a hard look at what we really mean about class size, the benefits, and the costs, and how we got there. Mr. Zelikow spoke quite a bit about the fact that we are not meeting our own policy, but it should be emphasized, it is our own, our own school committee's policy, wherever it's 22 or 25. Those numbers were decided upon by school committees back in the 60s, in the 80s, based on their own experience, impressions, and whatever. But what we are being told right now, at least what I read in the Lamp lighter, is that the small class size is based on a very particular study. There's a whole bunch of studies, and if you want, I have a file half an inch thick, and you can look them up in the Internet. You get 36,000 hits if you put in class size in Alta Vista. Some of you might want to spend a few hours on that, but... And, you know, there are class studies in Florida and California. But the specific one that we're being told about is the Tennessee study. So I looked it up. It started in '85 for grades K through 6, involves about 6,500 students, spread into 300 classes. And they were separated into class sizes, as it shows, you can read with me, 13 to 17, the average was 15. And the other two class sizes were both 22 to 25, with the distinction that one was with an aid and one without. The participation by the school districts in Tennessee was voluntary and somewhat self-selected. And the thing that struck me particularly about reading the results is that during the study, about 100, or an average of about one per class, of quote incompatible, unquote, children were moved from the small 13 to 17 classes to the higher ones, which to me distorts the results. The study did conclude that the children in the very small 13 to 17 size classes did better in reading and math by a statistically significant amount. For the many of you here who will want to know how much, the largest difference was about one quarter of a standard deviation. But the study also concluded, and this is a quote, "The idea of an ideal optimum class size is open to question. This investigation did not provide information about a variety of class sizes." As you will see, that's rather relevant to what we're talking about later, because we're not talking about class sizes of 13 to 17. And as a very quick aside, another conclusion of the study is that the results in the class sizes that were 22 to 25, with and without an aid, there was no difference, which is something else we can think about some other time. So the whole question of class size is a very difficult one, because we all have kind of preconceived ideas about that. And it does sound very logical that a smaller class size would be nice. But what I thought might be interesting is that as we looked at our own experience, which to me is more pertinent, and perhaps more valid than looking at Tennessee or Florida or California, this lower bar is the total enrollment, which you saw on the first graph. These are actuals, I didn't do the projected. And we're, actually, we're a year beyond this, I don't have the current figures. The scale on the right side is the average class size. This is the enrollment. And over the years, we have had average class sizes of 27, that's the high pretty much, and I don't have the numbers from before then, but they were probably higher. And we went down to 22, and again, all of these numbers come out of school committee reports. Now, what does this mean? Well, Mr. Zelikow used words such getting by, and I've heard another comment of the kids will survive if we don't do this. That has implications which I don't agree with, because, you know, we had, the kids that were in our school systems, on a personal note, Dory, my kids were the same age as yours, and I know that when they were there in their senior high years, there were 420, 450 students per class in the schools. They did a lot more than get by. They, as a matter of fact, established, or maintained, or enhanced the rather excellent reputation of the Acton school systems, which has resulted of many of you being here today. You came to Acton because we have an excellent school system, and that excellent school system exists in spite of the fact that we had average class sizes of 27 back in the 70s. So our own experience, measured in any way you want, standardized tests, SAT scores, college admissions, advanced placement tests, college scholarships, whatever you want to take, the performance has remained high. So what does that tell me? It tells me that class size is a factor, but it's not the most important factor. It's probably way down on the list, below things like quality teachers, curriculum, parental involvement, parental interest in their children's education, and not the least, the overall quality of Acton as a town. You know, our kids don't get mucked for their lunch money on their way to school. That counts too. The performance of the kids has not significantly, I'm going to put this back for one more point, has not significantly changed while these class sizes bounced around between 22 to 27. And what we're talking about now is maintaining this very narrow, bouncing around this very narrow low 20s range. We're not talking about going to class sizes of 13 or 30. Let's put it in context. The last thing, and I have to turn around and get some more stuff. I want to very quickly comment on the, I don't have a slide, I'll shut this off for a second, on the differences between the 70s and now, as listed in the Lamp lighter, which we all received. And I just go through them. It says, "How is education different than in the 70s, when we had a population similar to the expected peak enrollment, actually higher? Number one, we are using student-centered learning environments, excuse me, parentheses, not six rows of six seats." Six rows of six seats, 36 kids, is that implication? We never had that, never, in the years that I've been here. Comment was also made at a selectmen's meeting by Dr. Zimmerman, that we don't do one-size-fits-all education. I don't understand that. Ever since we've, 19, I'm not sure when the Pilots School opened, was it '71 or '72? Parked, no, it was 171? Since that time, we have had open enrollment, which was entire reason for being is that we have five elementary schools with different philosophies, different teaching methods, different approaches. We haven't had one-size-fits-all education, so frankly, I don't understand this at all. Next comment, "Special education requires space in the schools by state and federal law, mandated in '74." Very true, and you've heard, and I agree with Mr. Zelikow's point, that special education has just exploded. That's a subject that we could spend a couple hours on, obviously can't tonight. '74, by the way, was when we had the peak, so it's not that we didn't have it, and we had some special education before then, it was called other things. Special education is definitely a problem, but let's make a distinction between state-mandated programs, which apply to all school district, and things like case collaborative, which we have here by our own choice. They could be located somewhere else. That takes up classroom space. Kindergarten is now required, mandated in '73. I won't put the slide back up again, but that was the peak. Technology is a basic tool and needs space in schools. Yeah, that's right, and it's a matter of priorities. If we want small class sizes, then we have to decide what's a priority. Is having technology a priority? Having classroom use for other things a priority? If we took all of the classrooms that we have now and simply put them back to classroom use, particularly the special education, which is case, and that's a long story, and I won't dwell on that, if we put that back to classroom use, we could change the average class size down by 10% or more right now. We're not doing that, I'm not advocating that we do that, I'm just pointing out that there are options, and there are priorities. And if we decided other things are a priority, you know, it's like having a three-bedroom house and four kids. Do you give them each a bedroom, or do you not? And if you put one of the bedrooms, start using it as a computer room, then, you know, things change. Last point, community groups, community education, parent volunteers, use school space. That's after school. I mean, that's not when the kids are there. And that's really, to me, not a valid reason, and you'll see what other things we have on our plate, to ask the town to spend this kind of money. The other points have been already covered, but you get the idea. Next, let me show you, to put it all in context, what's going to happen at the junior and Back to the good old charts. Very quickly now, I'm not going to dwell on this. These are the same committee's projections, not my numbers, and these are actuals, we're actually here, but the projections are roughly what the actuals are. And this is the projection. This is junior high. Lower part is Acton, upper part of the bar is Foxborough. You can see what's going on. I'll go through this quickly. Same thing for the senior high. Total, 7 to 12, as opposed to the K through 6, where you saw a peak, and then it starts coming down. No such thing at the regional school. As far as the projection goes, it keeps going up. Reason, of course, is Foxborough, because their contribution to the enrollment is changing from a current level of about 17, 18% to, that's all from the other numbers, to a projected just under 30%. So even though the Acton population begins to diminish again, Foxborough picks up the So now, we need to ask ourselves, where's the problem? These are the numbers that you've seen, K through 6, which we're talking about tonight. That's the actual population, that's the projected peak. It's not the '05 number, it's the peak, and the increase is 4.4%. In the junior high, from the same numbers I just showed you, the change is 52.6%. And senior high, almost 64%. And my wife convinced me to, thank you, to put this in a way that looks a little more obvious. This is what we're talking about tonight. That's the problem we're addressing tonight, a 4.4% increase in projected enrollment, to the peak. We don't know what happens beyond that, it's debatable. But we're addressing this size problem. This is the junior high, this is the senior high. That's the size problem. Now, either we have room already now in the junior and senior high, and I won't belabor the point, but there was a time when we had 1,700 kids in the high school. So either we're all set, we can put them back in, in which case we must have extra space now, that we could be using for some of the things we're now doing at the elementary level, or we don't have room in the high school, in which case you're going to be looking at, what do we do with a 60% increase in enrollment? Pretty significant. I'm going to show you only one more slide, but I find it an interesting one. If I can find it. Here it is. This is back to K through 6, what we're on tonight. The red, I guess it shows, is enrollment. It's just shown as a line, because it gets too confusing. But this is enrollment on the left-hand scale, the same numbers you've seen before. But now I've added the number of staff positions, full-time equivalent, that we have in the system. Lower line is the non-certified staff, certified, and a total of the two. I hope, and this is, by the way, through last year, I don't have the current numbers, but I know by last year's annual town meeting projections, this has gone up by at least 10 more. In those two years, we've added 50 full-time equivalent staff positions. And this number is now higher historically than any previous year, including the peak enrollments of 2,700. We have a lot of staff. And the question you may want to ask yourself, is our space problem due to too many kids, or is it due to too many adults? John Prendeville will continue.
I'm not a stand-up comedian, so I can't follow that one very easily. Thanks, Charlie. My name is John Prendeville. I've been a taxpayer, along with my wife, for 30-plus years in the town of Acton, and I'm one of the people that Dory Hunter referred to, who educated his kids in these schools, paid for the buildings that were in. He didn't mention this building, which was, used to be the junior high school, and then was added to, nor was the, and the now junior high school was the high school. We paid for that also. And we're willing, people of my generation, to continue to pay. But we take a look at it from another perspective, and that's what we're presenting to you tonight. I'm going to review the analysis of the maintenance savings, which were made in presentations by the committee that was called the Lexicon Committee, consisted of members of the Board of Selectment, Finance Committee, and some other public servants, to the Board of Selectment, and then subsequently, the school committee made a presentation to the Finance Committee. The reason I'm doing this tonight is the arguments for the new building, the buildings that are proposed, were based on class size, enrollment, and maintenance savings. The maintenance savings appear to have been somewhat discounted at this point, but we'll share our findings with you. The three items that the committee looked at, Mr. Zelikow referred to, maintenance, operating costs, and the capital costs. I'm only concerned with the maintenance costs. What the committee decided was that, based on the architect's analysis, that we would have to spend in McCarthy and in Miriam, a total of, over the next 10 years, about $3.5 million. The building as proposed, Miriam's addition and renovation, and the new school would cost $647,000 over the 10-year period. And that shows is a difference of almost $3 million. Now, the plan, when we looked at it, said, were those savings based on good and substantive facts? facts? So we took another look at it, and we accept it. We'll accept the fact that in the continuums is plan, that one has to have three and a half, almost three-point-six million dollars to keep McCarthy Town and the Miriam School in a good shape. Now, what that money is paying for, as I analyze the data, is paying for the deferred maintenance that has not taken place in those schools and the bringing them up to speed. When you look at the building proposal, the McCarthy, the Miriam School, we're going to spend six-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand on this type of maintenance over the next ten years. The McCarthy Town, we are going to continue to have. Nobody is discontinuing it, it's not being raised, so some amount of maintenance has to be spent on that building. And I estimate, based on what the Lexicon Committee and their architects came up with, we'll spend the minimum amount of historical cost, about a hundred thousand or one million dollars over ten years. That has to be spent, and we're not going to let the building go down the tubes. And the new school will obviously start off, and will have to have its maintenance kept up to speed. Not in the cost, and what I put in was the amount of about two million dollars. Now, that two million dollars over the ten years, or roughly two-hundred thousand a year, is based on what it costs to maintain one of our five elementary schools today. If you look at the town budget for the schools, the Acton schools for nineteen ninety-eight, you'll see that we spent for custodial care, for electricity, for water, for gas, and for small repairs and maintenance, all the things that have to be done on a continuing basis are going to have to be spent in the new school. So the cost of maintenance now, in the new plan, will approximate three-point-seven million dollars. And I end up by saying that the study doesn't give you any extra funds at the bottom line for savings, because you don't have any maintenance savings. It's a wash, so we discounted it. Now, you would intuitively come to that realization, when you know that since we're not taking a building offline, and we're not firing anybody, that we have to continue to provide the funds for custodians, for energy, for water, and keep every building, including McCarthy Town, in a state of repair. We've got to repair it on a day-to-day basis. So that ends, I think, the argument that we're going to get any maintenance savings. Now, let me turn to the tax effects of the Acton Public School building proposal. I agree with the numbers that have been put up by everybody, because we all use the same sheet of music. The interesting thing is, if you look at it from different perspectives, one side of the elephant looks like one piece to you, and it looks like another piece to me. The numbers all come from the expert, John Murray, and we use his numbers, and the interpretation may be slightly different. And that's where the, that's what gives a good debate. The projects that are listed in the tax effects are the library, we've already voted for it, NARA, the Recreation Center, the sewers you've heard about, the Morrison Land, and the net effect of the twenty-one million dollars. Now, and then the police and fire, which remain to come along for five million dollars. The reimbursement, you hear about sixty-three percent, I have to look at from a total taxpayer's point of view. That's only a transfer of funds from yours and my state income taxes to the project. And over the state tax-paying lives of everybody in this room, and over my life of paying taxes, I've paid for the projects of other communities. So try to treat that as something that looks desirable, but in the full light of the day, your tax dollars, as expended to the state and to the town, are not going to significantly change. You're going to pay those dollars one way or the other. Now, the incremental effect on a three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar home in the town of Acton at the moment, is shown on this slide. The peak, and this is a three-hundred-and-thirty-k house, that's the new standard that we're using, because the three-hundred-thousand-dollar house has been appreciated by ten percent with revaluation. And it peaks up, as I think both Tom's and maybe Phil Zelikow's slide shows, seven-hundred-and-thirteen dollars in the year two thousand and two, of which two-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars is due to this project. That's the residential ubiquitous three-hundred-k tax bill. If we look at how that relates in total taxes on a residential home, I'm going to show you one last slide. I was going to show you one last slide, if I can find it here. Here we go. Okay. In this particular slide, I've used all of the approved projects that we voted for in town meeting, plus the two-and-a-half percent increase in taxes that will occur from nineteen ninety-eight along, because we're assured pretty much now that we're going to spend the full two-and-a-half percent each year. We're not going to leave any tax levy untaxed on the table. And I drove, put into this analysis, the operating costs associated with the Acton Public School twenty-one-million-dollar building. The taxes will go from a nominal six-thousand dollars for a three-thirty-k house in nineteen ninety-eight to a little over seventy-four-hundred dollars in nineteen, or in the year two thousand and four. Now, that does not include, as Tom Mackey's chart showed, monies for any other project to come. It doesn't include funds or tax allocations for the police and fire station, or anything else that may come down the pike that we don't know about today. I end up, after this analysis, in indicating to myself that the project is not financially well-designed. The maintenance savings are definitely not achievable, and the full impacts of the operational costs, the custodial costs, and the utility costs have not been reflected in the economic studies. And also, it's been mentioned before, the twenty-one-million-dollar price tag is based on a broad-brush study. It's not a preliminary engineering design at this stage. And I think most of us don't oppose a well-thought-out modest building expansion, but its analysis must include the total cost and must be evaluated as part of the town's total needs. Our children deserve a good learning environment. My kids got it, Dory Hunter's kids got it, and we want everybody else's kids to have it. But they, along with all the citizens, also deserve a police and a fire department that have the proper building infrastructures and operating.